Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome for attending today. This is the Education, Children and Families Urgency Subcommittee meeting on the 21st of July. This meeting has been called as the issues we are looking at today require decisions before the next formal meeting of the full Policy Committee in September. The meeting today is open to the public and will be webcast. Please, can I request that all mobile phones are silent in order not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff, and the assembly point is in Tudor Square. So if I could just go around to our committee members and ask you to introduce yourselves, please.
I'm councillor Polt, being a Green member for Gleepless Valley Ward.
Councillor Anne Whittaker for West Ecclestail Ward.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. I'm councillor Anne Murphy, councillor for the Manor Castle Ward.
Thank you. If I could ask officers to introduce themselves as well.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Jo Horrabin, Director of Integrated Commissioning.
Hello, I'm Candy Lawson, Strategic Commissioning Manager in Integrated Commissioning in Jo's team.
Hi, I'm Emma Bryan. I'm a commissioning officer in Candy's team.
Andrew Jones, Director for Education and Skills.
Tim Armstrong, Head of Access and Inclusion within Education and Skills.
Hi, I'm Emily Stanbrook-Shaw, Policy and Improvement Officer.
Hi, I'm Sarah Bennett. I'm Assistant Director of Legal and Governance.
Thank you, everyone. Emily, do we have any apologies for absence, please?
We do, Chair. We have apologies from councillor Mick Rooney, with councillor Anne Murphy substituting; apologies from councillor Brian Homshaw, with councillor Paul Turpin substituting; and apologies from councillor Colin Ross.
Thank you. And just for record, we are quorum, as we have got four members here today. Thank you. Do we have any exclusions of public and the press?
No, Chair, not today.
And can I ask if any of members have any declarations of interest, please? That's a no for the record, thank you. So item number five on the agenda is the renewal of contract with Nexus Multi-Agents Academy Trust to deliver the medical needs education service. Presenting officers expected today are Emily Bryan, as introduced; commissioning officer Candy Lawson; commissioning manager and Jo Horrabin, Director of Commissioning. So if I could just hand over now so that you can present your report, thank you.
Thank you. And so this is the report to the Education, Children and Families Urgency Subcommittee. And what we're seeking today is firstly, an agreement that the local authority should use its funding, as set out in this paper, for the purpose of a medical needs education service; and secondly, agreement for the local authority to conduct a commissioning exercise to put the provider in place. So I'm going to hand over to Emma, who's going to talk through some of the detail of the paper.
Hi. So I thought I'd start with a bit of an introduction, a bit of an overview of what this provision is and what it looks like, so that that's understood. So essentially, this is an alternative provision, in the sense of a provision provided by the local authority to provide education for pupils who wouldn't otherwise be able to receive an education. And in this case, these are pupils with medical needs that prevent them from attending school. In most cases, that's mental health needs, but there are pupils as well with health needs that prevent them from accessing education. Essentially, it's a small school based in Hillsborough, in the former barracks, in a chapel that used to be a chapel there. It houses 80 to 90 pupils, and some pupils are also taught at home if they're unable to access the building to go in to attend. And primary pupils are taught at home as well. So they offer core subjects, so English, maths and science. So pupils that are there at year 11 are able to come out with a set of GCSEs that will enable them to progress to further education or other routes forward. So in addition to the paper, we've put together some information, additional information that was requested by councillors, which I think you have, on some slides that have been printed out for you. So I was going to just talk through those. So there's a bit of extra information there about the financial context and impact as well. So the first slide about finance shows you the placement, the level of place funding and how that compares to IAS, which are integrated resources. So that's specialist provision within mainstream schools. And also how it compares to special school place funding in Sheffield. And then there's some detail there about funding into this provision. So we do take some funding from schools if they have a pupil accessing this provision, and that's the core funding known as ORP funding. So we estimate for this coming year, that'll be up to 220,000 coming in from schools. And the remainder of the funding is taken from the high needs block, which is given to local authorities to meet our statutory duties. So this provision does allow us to meet our statutory duty to provide education for pupils not well enough otherwise to access. So we are legally obliged to do that. And then there are also, so we also have a slice of funding that is just for the rental of the building. And there's also an outreach offer that the provider delivers as well. So that's preventing, hopefully, some children from needing this provision. So children at risk of ceasing to attend because of mental health. And then impact. So I've just drawn some data there from my most recent monitoring, but it's actually fairly representative of the impact that they show us. So we do see quite a dramatic increase in attendance once people start accessing compared to what was happening at school beforehand. And we've got pupils meeting targets for English and maths, and on track to get GCSEs, that's the current year elevens. And almost all year elevens have got a post-16 destination lined up, whether that's, in most cases, that'll be college, Sheffield College, but also there might be other routes as well. And then you've got some figures there about reintegration. So primary key stage three, all those pupils from that school year have gone back to A school. With key stage four is more complex, so significantly lower. There's a difficulty with any pupil accessing from the midpoint of year 10 in terms of reintegrating into a school, because the curriculum will be different for some of those subjects. So you get less movement for key stage four. And you've got some data on needs and the recent inspection, pupil satisfaction. And then we've got actually a third slide there about pupil voice. So this is just from this spring, but it's always really positive. We get really good feedback from parents and pupils about the provision, both the kind of wellbeing and resilience side, but also the education as well. So we're proposing to essentially recommission this for further two years. Yeah, and that was about everything.
Thank you, Emma. Do any members have any questions? Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Can you just go through the numbers of any of the looked-after children that are having and receiving this service? And can I just ask about the funding? Is there any room for that funding to be extended? Or is that exactly how much it's going to cost and you're looking for? I'm just bearing in mind the number of children that are coming into our services, to local authority services, that may have got similar issues that need to be provided for by this type of schooling.
So they currently have five, or this school year, they've had five looked-after children, which is 5% of the cohort, which is quite a high proportion, presumably because they do have a lot of people with early trauma in their lives that end up there. In terms of, I'm sorry, in the last few years, it's been one or two lack pupils. But the capacity of the provision has increased by about 20 places this year, so we would have expected it to go up a little bit. In terms of funding, I mean, we will need to keep an eye on it this year and the capacity. At the moment, the year that we're just finishing, it's been sufficient for the need. But we are aware that we still have need coming through out of Covid, and they are at the limit, they have been at the limit this year. So we'll be keeping close eye on it over the autumn term. But essentially, there is potential room for growth financially, given that the funding's drawn from the high needs block. And I think there's room for manoeuvre.
So one of the things that we do is we have termly monitoring with all the providers. And part of that is looking at the impact and the quality of the provision, but it's also for us to look at how sufficient the capacity is. So as we move through the year, on a quarterly basis, we're looking at that all the time, talking to Education and Skills about what the demand is coming through. And that's where the growth came from this year, to up from 80 places to 100. We will continue to need to review that and consider, is this the right provision? Is it the right capacity? And do we need to make new recommendations or grow the provision or do something completely different? So we go through that commissioning cycle as an ongoing basis. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Would you like to come in?
One of my questions, you have just answered, that's all right. How long have Nexus actually had this contract?
So the provision is delivered by Becton School that became part of Nexus Multi-Academy Trust in 2020. So obviously Nexus have only had it since then. But I think Becton School were running it since it started, which was in 2015.
Thank you.
Continuity there.
Councillor Turpin.
Thank you. Can I just ask you, press you a little bit further on this question on capacity? So it's clearly a really good and valuable service and something that we absolutely should be having. And it's quite a short contract compared to when we normally contract, and you know, two years isn't very long, is it? So is that because of capacity concerns? And what would be the solution? You know, I appreciate that you're monitoring that. But what would be the solution? Will there have to be, you know, a completely different venue or provider or both? Or will Nexus extend that, you know, that building? Or what's the plan?
So the building itself, we wouldn't want any more children in. And even in a building with more space, you wouldn't want a school essentially that was bigger than that for these children, I suppose, because at that point it's becoming less accessible. So obviously, one option, if we do need growth, is a second site, which could be delivered by Nexus or another provider. But another option might be to look at more outreach into the home, I suppose, which is a different way to do some of this. So I think that would all need to be considered.
So again, I think that's part of our commissioning cycle that we need to keep an eye on in terms of, I think we have started to look at potential if we did need another site, so we start to look at some of the options of that already. But as we sort of progress through the year and keep an eye on what that demand is looking like, we would look at a variety of different options, growing the current model, looking at different sites, looking at potential outreach into schools, outreach into the home. So a range of different options would be looked at, and then we'll go through those options and look at what's best for the cohort and also what can be afforded within the high needs block.
And sorry, just to add to that as well, I think that there's some ongoing work that Tim knows about to, I suppose, encourage schools to do more, perhaps to prevent long periods of absence that then end up with this provision. So I think there's a medical needs policy, isn't there, that's in draft? And is that okay?
Yeah. So as has been said, we've got a statutory duty to provide education for children who are medically unable to attend school for more than 15 days, which is where the commission comes from. What we know is that the majority of that is around emotional wellbeing, mental health, which is why it's set up the way this is, rather than broken leg and off school for three weeks. What we're trying to do is make sure that part of our policy around that, working alongside our colleagues in health, who have a responsibility around medical needs in school and supporting the medical needs in school, and working alongside our colleagues who have responsibility around mental health, so CCG, no, ICB, I've got to get it right, no longer CCG, and Mental Health Services, is to try and make sure we've got all of the different types of strategies so that we're taking an earlier intervention approach. We know particularly post-pandemic that the emotional wellbeing of children is much, has been quite impacted. But some of it is nothing to do with the pandemic, the pandemic has highlighted it, there are broader issues there. So we are working with schools to try and say, what are the strategies that can happen? How are you identifying those needs? How are you working with all the resources that you've got? So for example, mental health support teams, schools are required to have a mental health lead. What are we doing through them to prevent getting to the point where the child is too ill to actually attend an educational provision in the way that there would be their normal educational provision? There are all sorts of different examples out there. There are, there's a really interesting one in terms of particularly effective with primary school that Becton have used, where the child who's too ill can be at home but have a robot sat on their desk in school. Works a little less at secondary because someone's got to pick it up and take it to biology and then to physics and all that sort of stuff. So there's lots of different strategies around that that we're trying to look at so that we can be clear that our provision in this space isn't an and/or, i.e. school or here, because the growth is enormous and at risk from that point of view, but is a continuum. Also with the intent that we're using that continuum to move young people back from Chapel House in Becton and that provision back into their school in a staggered and staged way. So the policy approach around all of it, this is sort of the endpoint, critical bit and clinical bit, there's all of that rest of the work that has to take place to support children in terms of their mental health and wellbeing. And that's part of the bigger policy that we've got to make sure works for us as a city. Can I just ask, I mean, you know, it sounds very much like you know what you're talking about and you've got a handle on things. So with your educated opinion, do you think there will be a growth in demand that will lead to this venue not having enough capacity in the next two years?
I think that's likely. It's, I think it's just a little bit hard to call at the moment because it's been such an exceptional couple of years, I guess. But I suppose the only question is whether they hit that capacity this year because of Covid and things might drop down again a little bit, but in all likelihood, I think. Social, emotional and mental health needs across the city are rising exponentially. And that has, you know, that was happening before Covid, so.
So a bit like Tim's kind of explaining, what we're trying to do with this is look more as a whole system. So rather than just look at the need for a medical needs school, we're looking right from very preventative approaches all the way through. Otherwise, we'd just be firefighting. So all the kinds of things that Tim's mentioned, we're looking at developing in the kind of the mainstream, things like trauma-informed practice that kind of supports children at a very, very early stage. And at this end, this is where Emma's responsible for this contract and looking at what's coming up here and making sure that we can cater for it at that end. So it's a whole system approach, essentially.
Final question. So if a child has been identified as requiring this service, what typically, how long will it be before they can start attending? I mean, speaking perfectly anecdotally, I've heard of children being out of education for a year or more, you know, in between. And I just wondered if you can give me an idea of that.
So when children are referred into this provision, it's a really quick turnaround, essentially. There's not usually wait at all. So children need to be referred by a medical practitioner, and that referral might be made with some input from the school as well. So that could be a consultant or a GP. But I understand what you're saying, that there might have been a long period of absence prior to that. So I'm not an expert on that side of it, I don't know.
I think that is part of the whole system approach. So what we're putting forward today is this medical needs provision. But I think what you're talking about, quite rightly, is that kind of whole system, how do we work with the mainstream to make sure that we're identifying children early and making sure that we haven't, we don't end up in a situation where children are out of school for a very long time. That's the, partly this commission contributes to that, but also it's part of a lot of other work that we're doing and a lot of work that's going on in Education and Skills. So Education and Skills and Commissioning Directors work collaboratively on that. So very happy to come back and talk to you about that and give you a fuller picture. But I'm not sure we've got all of that information here for you today.
If I can just come in on that, then, councillor Turpin, if that's all right. I will make a note of that so that we look at our agenda as a committee and look at this in a holistic approach, so that we can look at that journey, which you've just explained to us, Tim, what we're doing as prevention and intervention work. And we have been looking at services for a while now to see how we do that, so that we're not dealing with it and firefighting at the other end. So if you're happy for us to bring that again, we'll have it on an agenda item, so you can all come and do a presentation on that, if that's all right. Thank you.
That's brilliant. Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you very much.
Sorry, I've just got councillor Murphy join, if then you would like to come in after. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. It's similar. Sorry, Chair, I should have declared an interest. I'm a respite foster carer, I think I've declared it previously. And I was trying to imagine the journey of some of the looked-after children we care for. And some of their schooling has been hugely interrupted throughout their educational journey. And sometimes that has taken quite a while to be picked up, and that may be down to funding or various other issues, from their social care services to their fostering agencies to their placements that are often disrupted and they're moving placements between carers, a variety of different issues that can happen to these young people throughout their fostering lives, shall we say, that always impacts on their education. And it's very rare, to my experience, that the schools pick that up and are proactive about getting in touch with services, either GPs or whoever. It tends to be left with carers, social workers, who, as you know, the turnover of staff and, you know, the appointed looked-after child's carers and foster parents then have even more work to have to do educationally, along with dealing with that child and the trauma that that child's actually going through at the same time. So to hear that trauma training in school is part of what you'll be looking at is really good, because that's definitely needed. But for me, just trying to visualise that journey for some of those, particularly our looked-after children, I wasn't, how shall I say, convinced that there wouldn't be that level of disruption that could be picked up early and that the education side of that child's experience could be resolved sooner rather than later. And prevention's a great word, but it's not always what is used. It's not always the first port of call for professionals that are involved in that child's life. Sometimes it's just about ensuring that the child is settled and its other welfare needs are taken care of. And education sometimes takes a bit of a back seat, which, you know, I'm not suggesting is always the right or wrong way, but I think sometimes for some of our looked-after children anyway, education is often secondary to their overall care. So if you're telling us that you're going to try and make that more of a priority, I'd really like to hear from some of our looked-after children about their experience of how that's been for them. Because as councillor Fitz said, I've worked with children who've been out of school for at least a year, if not longer. And then when it's time to try and fit them back into the education classroom system, it's been incredibly difficult, be that at Becton or wherever, or in other provision. It's incredibly difficult for that young person to then have to start again, you know, make new friends, go to new places, get to know the teachers, et cetera. So I do wonder whether or not we could have a bit more of a real sort of vision from, an input from some of the children who are going through that and listen and hear their experiences. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. We will work on that. So we will try and work it in a way where we can work with young people so that they feel comfortable enough to come and have that conversation with us as adults, if that's all right. Jo, would you like to come in?
Done it again, sorry, nearly throwing it off the desk every time. Yeah, I just wanted to add that I think the conversation that we've had, the dialogue we've had this afternoon about this, I think it would be worth, if we can come back and bring something more rounded and more holistic, I think it would be really useful for us to think about how we do that with health colleagues and social care colleagues as well, so that actually you've got that really, we can have a really rounded perspective and, you know, describe, as you say, a journey and perhaps take some examples, some case studies, both for looked-after children who are looked after and also for children who are not looked after or, you know, are looked after at home with their family. But yeah, I think it'd be useful to do that, and I'm quite happy to take that away with colleagues today.
Thank you, Jo. Does anybody have any more comments they'd like to add at this point? No? Okay, so just to reiterate then, the report contains recommendations for approval, which are to approve the commissioning of a service contract with a term of two years and a value of £2.6 million for the provision of the medical needs education service, and to note the intention of the council to issue a direct award of a service contract to Nexus Multi-Agency Trust, subject to officer approval by way of a separate decision. Is there any dissent? If there is, would you like to raise your hands? No? So for the record, there is no dissent and that recommendation is agreed. Thank you. Thank you. So now we've got agenda item number six, which is the Green Paper Consultation, Special Educational Needs and Disabilities Review, Right Support, Right Place, Right Time. The presenters today are Officer Tim Armstrong, Head of SEND, and Andrew Jones, Director of Education and Skills. So if you'd like to present your report, please.
Just to preface this, we discussed this briefly at a previous committee meeting. And outside of that committee meeting, we spoke to the co-chairs, the vice chair and the lead member for the other party. And it was agreed that actually the council's response to the green paper would be brought before the committee to be discussed in public. And that would set precedent for that in terms of future consultations that the council was engaged in. And that's in order to create the kind of transparency that obviously the referendum last year was designed to do in terms of bringing to beam the committee system. So we're kind of to the wire soon, because actually the green paper response has to be sent back to the DFE. Tim's going to run that through with you shortly. His label is incorrect because he's not the head of SEND, he's the Head of Access and Inclusion, just for the record as well. And it's in Tim's service, Access and Inclusion, that the response has been drafted. So with that, Tim?
Great. So yeah, as Andrew said, came on the 9th of June and was flagged actually to check. So that's why it's come separately after we've checked in terms of the policy approaches. This is substantial policy change from national basis that has an impact on us as a local authority and all of our schools and particularly our children, young people and their families in the school. Just to reiterate, this has come from the SEND review, done and delivered by government over a number of years. It was delayed during the pandemic. It followed on from SEND reforms that came with Children and Families Act in 2014. 2019, they started the review, and it was published earlier this year. There are 22 consultation questions in total. I'm not going to talk you through all of them because that would definitely take us beyond our time. So I think it's going to be by exception rather than full details, but it obviously is all provided in terms of the response. This is specifically a local authority response that we have worked alongside CCG colleagues. There is a response going from our Parent Care Forum, sorry, not CCG, I've done it again, ICB colleagues, it would come off the tongue soon. The Parent Care Forum have also been consulting. So lots of organisations are consulting and providing a response. Individual schools can, any individual resident can, in terms of it. Critically, the review found that there were, so the SEND review found that there were three real challenges on a national basis in the world of SEND, and they've incorporated alternative provision. We talked about one type of alternative provision today. Obviously, alternative provision also includes provisions for children permanently excluded from school and provision where children are directed off the school site for some of their education. But what the system found is that navigating, what the review found is that... But what the system found is that navigating, what the review found is that navigating the system isn't a positive experience for too many children and their families on a national level. They found that outcomes for children, young people with SEND and in AP are consistently worse than their peers, and that despite continuing investment, the system's not financially sustainable in the way that it currently works. And then the review's made four proposals, broken down into chapters, of which the consultation questions respond. So that's around having a single national SEND and AP system, excellent provision from early years to adulthood, a reformed and integrated role for alternative provision, so specific focus there, and then the system roles and accountabilities. And as we said back in June to the committee, this sits alongside both the White Paper and the social care, the recent social care review, and so all of them are read as a whole. So there are 22 questions, and we've drafted up based on expertise, experience, knowledge and discussion over the past couple of months. The deadline is 11:45 tomorrow, and so it does need to be sent tomorrow. So happy to take any questions about specific points within the consultation response and go from there.
Thank you Tim. Does anyone have any questions? Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, thanks Tim. I appreciate that the deadline's quite tight, but I've got a couple of concerns, but I've also got some questions about the timings of some of the alternative provision for our children again. You know, there's a high number of looked after children that are in our SEND education facility. But I'm concerned about the reduction in their actual school timetable and their times at school. Often I bump into or see these children out and about in their local communities after two o'clock in the afternoon where school, you know, normally finishes half past three, four o'clock, and they're kind of hanging around, not doing a great deal, parents maybe out at work, et cetera. And I just wonder if we could incorporate some kind of question that we can try and get some answers to resolve those sort of timings of the provision of alternative education for some of the children that particularly are excluded from our education services and those who are in our SEND, Special Educational Needs Services. I know of several of the schools that run our education centres and they tend to finish early or they have half days every now and again, for whatever reasons, but I do think, again, for me, it puts education on the backseat for a lot of those young people. I'm not suggesting that that timing isn't the correct one, but I do wonder about them being linked into other services or other provision that might be available for them rather than just to go home, for them to then come back out again and be out in the community, or for them just to be at home without anything else to occupy their time. You've got to remember that often these children have certain diagnoses as well that goes with their level of education need, and I don't think we always respond to that. And I know it's difficult to do it personally for each individual child, but I think we've kind of narrowed their experience, their educational service and experience by limiting their timetable and the hours that they spend in education.
Thanks Chair. Thanks Anne. Tim, do you want to just respond, if that is something that would go in this, because this is the response to the consultation, isn't it? Can you just give us some feedback on that?
So you're absolutely right, I don't think there's anywhere to put that into the consultation response, but what I will say is that the, because the reason why it wouldn't go into the consultation response is because government would turn around and say, actually, it's for you as local areas to commission the education provision and hold them to account. What I would say is that the DFE have recently published updated advice and guidance around school attendance, and particularly issues around reduced, within there is discussion about issues about reduced timetables and full, and there's a broader issue in terms of the White Paper talks about 32 and a half hours education delivery a week. What we do know is that some kids really struggle to be in their educational provision, whether it's school or AP, all of the time. What we've got to be better at is making sure that the education is adapted to meet the needs of the child so that they can attend more of that provision. The guidance that's come through from DFE is quite clear about reduced timetables, that it shouldn't be used to manage behaviour. And so by that, what we currently see is some, sometimes it's easier for that child and for the school to potentially, for the child not to be in school because they're not coping and their behaviours are escalating. What the guidance is very clear about is that a reduced timetable should be a very fixed term intervention to deal with a particular issue rather than deal with a behaviour. And so we need to make sure that our schools are really clear on that. As of September, all schools are supposed to have a strategic lead for attendance, who have that oversight of what's happening around attendance in their school and not just in their school, for all of their children, for example, if they're placed in alternative provision. And so we'll be using that and working through that to make sure that there is a full-time offer for young people and that we reduce the number of reduced timetables, because you're absolutely right, there are a lot of children who aren't in school full-time as they should be, and there are a raft of different reasons behind that. I think the other thing that I would say is that one of the things that we want to be really clear on is that children are expected to be in school full-time, they have to be registered for 10 sessions a week, mornings and afternoon. Where we discover that maybe the school's trying to look at what that looks like, we've got to work with any schools that say, we're not going to have them in for this session or this session, to work out what that conversation's around and why they're not open for that session. So that's part of what we have to make sure, that when we're looking at our broader attendance issue, we're talking about what's the school day and the school week look like. I am aware that obviously some children are directed off-site for some of their provision to alternative provision, and we've had a previous conversation about regulated, unregulated, and there's a further piece of work out there which is referenced in the Green Paper. One of the bits that we have to make sure of is that that provision isn't a 11 till 1.30 type provision, it's got to be a full-time offer. We can do that with the provision that comes under our framework, we have to make sure that any schools that aren't utilising provision off the framework are doing, asking the same question. So again, part of that attendance monitoring on a term, which will be a meeting on a termly basis, will be asking those things. So I'm hoping that attendance guidance will draw it a lot tighter and hopefully try and address some of those concerns.
Thank you Tim. On the back of that, as the co-chairs, vice chair and spokesperson, we, sorry, I will get a grip of it eventually, we have had these discussions locally and nationally, alternative provision is clearly an issue as it has come out in the Green Paper, and we have spoken with officers, I have spoken to Andrew this morning about looking at bringing alternative provision up the agenda to the November meeting. We can't get it on the agenda in September because it's packed. We will go away and look at our work programme, we do have a work programme set for the committee, but we are, we will be able to move things round in terms of priorities, and I feel that alternative provision is coming up the agenda. A lot of, I don't know about you as local councillors, but we do get a lot of information from local parents around alternative provision, and as a city, you know, we know, we want the best possible solutions for our young people. So we will endeavour to get that on our agenda for November, if you can just make a note of that please, and then we'll have a look at that. Thank you. Does anyone else have any more questions? Councillor Turpin?
Thank you Chair, I just wanted to make a short comment, I'm not going to attempt to tell the expert professionals in the room what to do because clearly they know better than I do, but just to, it's really interesting reading and you can really feel your knowledge coming off the sheets. And so I just wanted to thank you for doing it, and you know, it's always a concern when the government start fiddling with the education system, and I particularly like your answer to question 21, you know, you couldn't be more clear and on it there, and you know, that's not, they're the things that we wouldn't generally expect from our present government, but let's hope they're listening. And I also note, there's a part in your answer to question 22 which relates directly to the previous item on the agenda. So it is a worry, and I hope that your points are taken on board by the government and we're all right. So yeah, thanks, that's all Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Turpin. And just on that, I'd like to thank officers for everything today, but this paper especially, I went through it line by line, so as the co-chairs, vice chair and elected spokesperson, we did go through it with officers, and we wanted to make it very clear within this document that while the government wants to change things, it has to be funded. It very clearly, if they want to raise standards and expectations for the young people of this city, the funding needs to come to Sheffield to be able to do that. We're not prepared to do it on a shoestring. They, you know, our young people deserve the best quality provision, so thank you for that. So on that note, do any officers have anything that you'd like to add? No? So the report contains the recommendation that we approve the response to the Department for Education Green Paper, SEND review, right support, right place, right time. Is there any dissent from members? No? Then for the record, I'd like to recommend that we, the recommendation is agreed. Thank you. And that is the end of our meeting this day. Thank you very much.